So why don't we just proceed to the first public comment card called the first two minutes? And Mr. Mayor, Mary Ann Webster, followed by Tom Camerone. Ms. Webster. Camerone. I thought I saw her earlier. Followed by Carleen Brown.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The Buffalo Common Council, which is their city council, voted to ban fracking in the city of Buffalo due to its negative effects on groundwater and neighboring properties. This must be any government's top priority to protect the water supply and health of the residents in the area, said Council President Richard Fontana. In February 2011, Buffalo became the first city in New York State to protect residents from drilling and waste disposal by passing municipal legislation imposing fracking and fracking waste. Buffalo has led the statewide fight against fracking with their municipal legislation, with over 60 municipalities having passed some sort of local ordinance restricting fracking since. Now, the second-largest city in New York is standing up again, this time to protect its neighbors. I know that the council is concerned about a lawsuit from the oil industry, but there have been 180 resolutions and ordinances passed around the country, and only three lawsuits. And of those three, banning fracking, one, two of them, and we only lost one. We want to work with the city council to produce something that is meaningful and that will protect the citizens and residents of this community. We don't want to be infamous bankrupt city like Love Canal that created numerous deaths, destroyed the city, destroyed its property values, its county, and will be forever known as a community that didn't protect its citizens and residents. Let us work with the city attorney for the next three weeks to produce the information that we need to create a good ordinance that protects our citizens. As you have been informed, there are several organizations and their lawyers that will help in researching and crafting what will ultimately protect Culver City and its residents. This will save the city many dollars. Last but not least, we can't emphasize how important our water is in this state. It takes anywhere from 500,000 gallons to 5 million gallons of water to frac one well. They have hundreds of wells up there already and are planning hundreds more. If New York is so concerned about contaminated water supplies, and remember, they get ample replenishing rains all year round. What do you think we, who have to pay dearly for every drop of clean water, should be concerned about? Once our aquifers are contaminated, they will be so virtually forever. We won't ever be able to use them again. That means we will have to pay even more money for our residential and industrial water. I'm almost done. That's not good for us. Many have said we residents get little or nothing from allowing fracking to happen. They are wrong. We get cancer clusters, lower mental scores, more overweight citizens, more citizens with significantly higher blood pressure, more smelly off-gassing, skyrocketing asthma, more contaminated water, more expensive water, and more deaths. This council can be seen as heroes across the nation or as those who passed up an opportunity of a lifetime. Please be the heroes I believe you can be. Right?
Right!
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so you only violated two rules. You went over the three minutes and directed your comments to the audience. Let that be a lesson to the next person that comes up. Carleen Brown, followed by Sergey Fujangfo. Forgive me if I spoke.
Good evening, Mayor Weissman and city council members. I am grateful that this moratorium resolution is before Culver City Council this evening. I am grateful that I, as a resident, have an opportunity to speak to this issue from my unique vantage point. Though I strongly urge adoption of this resolution, I firmly believe that fracking should be totally banned throughout the state of California. This moratorium is a step in the right direction, however. And as we take this step, I point us to a larger vision that I share with many Culver City residents, especially those of us who worked to get Megan Solly Wells and Jim Clark elected to this council as this Culver City News photo indicates a new era begins. We hold a vision of Culver City as a model of sustainability, a vision in which we've totally released our dependence upon oil, a vision like the one put forth by Harvey Wasserman of Solartopia, "Our Green Powered Earth," A.D. 2030. Robert F. Kennedy Jr. says Solartopia is beautiful, tangible, credible, necessary, and doable. Kennedy, along with Wasserman, lauds wind, solar, and biofuels as the exciting path to economic and ecological prosperity. Albert Einstein said imagination is more important than knowledge. We are privileged to hear from many knowledgeable people here tonight. But according to Einstein, knowledge is limited, whereas imagination circles the world. I invite you to take a tour with me into Harvey Wasserman's imagination for just a moment. We are three decades into the first century of sustainable millennium. New Solartopians have consummated a marriage, economic prosperity fueled by earth-friendly technologies wed to a culture of natural efficiency and mutual respect. In concert, they launched the global solar revolution that doused the fires of climate chaos while raising the spirits of natural wealth and abundant health. At the brink of the apocalypse, with Mother Nature a blank away from pulling the plug, the better angels of our souls saw the big light and did what had to be done. May the better angels of Culver City's council souls see the big light and do what has to be done tonight. Pass this resolution.
Thank you. So many can't tell what it can be done for. Sergey Fujangfo, followed by Dr. King King D.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sergey Fujangfo. I'm Culver City President in the entry complex. With my wife, Bambi Fujangfo, I traveled back and forth through Europe so we know the global issues of fracking. After the Californians were ahead and progressive to protect the environment, and that is why I was surprised to see that we are behind France to ban the fracking. Previously, the French government gave the gas company the approval to frac. However, they realized a mistake due to the safety issue involved and pressure. Currently, it is banned everywhere urban and country in France. And it is a burden of the gas company to prove that it is not risky, not only on the populated areas, but everywhere, even in the random circles forest. So it is to my question about fracking is allowed in our metropolitan area in our city and state here in California. Accord for a city and state ban or at least give the burden of safety strictly to PXP to proven safe. Thank you.
Dr. King King D, followed by Rick Tuttle.
Thank you, councilmen and women, as mayor. I'm here on behalf of the Culver Crest Neighborhood Association. I'm its president. The last time I was here, on June 18th, I brought to the subject of a bond and insurance requirement for oil drilling in the city of Culver City. And as it turns out, I read the Culver City Municipal Codes further, and there was a code 11.12.035, which states that as a bond and insurance requirement, the oil drilling company is required to put up a bond, an insurance bond of $10 million. And I was just wondering if that is indeed the case and whether that's been put up. And it says that the bond shall guarantee the faithful performance of all conditions of the permit and all other pertinent city, state, or federal laws. The bond shall also further guarantee payment of all costs for removing, dismantling, demolishing in a manner approved provided by the city's building official and strict accordance with the rules and regulations of the Division of Oil, Gas and Jew of their own resources. The state of California own any regulatory authority jurisdiction or any structures erected on premises on the abandonment or cessation of drilling activity on the permitted premises. Whether this has been occurring in oil fields. And there is an abandonment fee that should be paid for the city's inspection of premises as that occurred. And the bond also guarantees the payment of all costs for returning premises to substantially its original condition, free from all oil, lodey, mud, oil-soaked earth, asphalt, concrete, litter debris, and other substances caused by drilling or pumping activity as that occurred in the dog park where such damages were seen. And secondly, six years after the release of noxious odors from Culver Crest in 2006, Sonoma Technologies has been granted contract for air quality monitoring survey to run a prop site for two years, which will take an additional year for data analysis, peer review, and final release of data to the public. Because this will take a total of three years, I would like to request that we consider a three-year moratorium on fracking in the city of Culver City until the results of the study could be available to the public. I would like you to consider and request that you leave a legacy of caring and safety for children and grandchildren where they look back on your legacy and they say that our granddads and grandmoms made our city safe and rescued us from infinite decades and decades and decades of misery and drudgery from all the pollutants from oil drilling and fracking. Thank you very much for your attention.
Rick Tuttle, followed by Rebecca Rona. We will get the answers. I don't know whether I see our city attorney's hub and I'll be able to get the answers tonight. Hold each and answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I have three points to make. To reintroduce myself, I am Rick Tuttle. I'm a resident of Sunkist Park here in Culver City. I've been for the last three or four years. Three points to make are: One, the statewide resolution we have before us is not strong enough. It should be a resolution, and I hope there'll be an addition to it by this council of support for a statewide ban. My second observation is that in terms of the city of Culver City, I hope that the city council of the city of Culver City will enact a ban on fracking in and under Culver City. My third observation pertains to the second observation, and that is I recognize that it's a two-part agenda tonight. One, the statewide resolution. Second is our local situation here. And we've benefited from a city attorney's report thus far, which includes a cost-benefit analysis. It's done under fairly tight time constraints. And I think it's an able job as far as it goes. However, there's more to the cost-benefit analysis and the cost to the city. If the city does enact a ban, the city attorney indicated that it would be indeterminate legal costs, for example. Possible loss of revenue could be determined. But there's also the question, members of the council, is what happened if a ban is not enacted? And if something goes wrong with the fracking? The evidence around the country and even internationally is that it's a very volatile, high-risk situation for those of us to live in Culver City. For example, what would the impact on the tax base be? If properties are compromised? What would the impact be to the real estate and to the banking communities if properties are compromised? So therefore, conclusion, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I hope tonight there will be, as we move through your deliberations, there will be a motion seconded for there to be a ban on fracking in the city in and under the city of Culver City. Worth it, and it would take additional notice. We're glad to have you vote yes on it tonight, if you wish, for additional notice so that in two weeks or four weeks, in the regular course of business, staff will have more time to develop a more detailed analysis, including work from the city manager, as well as the city attorney, because it's a policy issue and financial issue as well. And then you'll have an opportunity to either vote up or down or to withdraw a motion to ban fracking in the city of Culver City. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Rebecca Rona Tuttle, and I am a longtime Culver City resident. We all have basic human rights, among them, the right to health and safety. We assume that as our elected representatives, you will do everything possible to ensure the health and safety of Culver City residents, and that means banning fracking. I appreciate the thought that went into crafting the resolution, but there are problems with it. First is only a request. California might or might not pass a moratorium. If California did not pass a moratorium, Culver City would have absolutely no protection. Secondly, even a moratorium is not strong enough. No regulations will make fracking safe. A major earthquake in or near Culver City would cost far more than fighting a lawsuit in terms of actual dollars harmed to residents, animals, homes, commercial buildings, schools, and infrastructure, such as damaged roads and pipelines, plus plummeting property values. You have already heard a great deal of testimony, both tonight and certainly June 12th, about the numerous and grave dangers of fracking, so I won't repeat those now. I ask that you take three significant and brave steps. Vote in favor of a fracking ban for Culver City. Vote in favor of urging the governor to ban fracking in California. Reach out to our county and state elected officials. Tell them that we need and expect their assistance to ban fracking in the county of Los Angeles and California. Council members, when realize it is difficult to act when you fear litigation. Nonetheless, we expect you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Molly Walinsky, followed by Lillian Light.
I'm Molly Lee Walinsky. I have lived here in Culver City for 62 years. Before you, you have a letter addressed to Governor Jerry Brown regarding fracking in California. And there's a two-page letter about all the bad things about fracking. And there is another page of all the organizations that have signed on to this letter. I would like to see that the Culver City City Council signed on to this letter as well, asking the governor to ban fracking in California. I am 84. It's my goal to live to 100. Now, if they're going to make a mistake up there, I live in, close to it, it won't happen. Now, I made a promise to my kids that I would, so I expect you to ban fracking so I can live to 100. Thank you very much for giving me that.
Lillian Light, followed by Lisa Flickwell.
I'm Lillian Light. From, I hate to say this, but I'm not from this town. I'm from a neighboring city, Manhattan Beach. I'm president of the Environmental Priorities Network, a group of people from the beach cities and Palos Verdes. We welcome anybody from this town to come too. Our board has been very concerned about the dangers of fracking since we saw water from faucets catching on fire in the movie Gas Land. We feel that this drilling technique threatens water, wildlife, air, and public health. Throughout the country, evidence is mounting that fracking chemicals are making their way into aquifers and drinking water. Because Congress exempted fracking chemicals from the Safe Drinking Water Act, we do not know what poisonous chemicals are being blasted into the earth. We do know that diesel is one of them. And diesel contains benzene, tylenol, xylene, and other toxic substances. Certainly, you are not in favor of poisoning our drinking water, possibly irreversibly. Fracking will also exacerbate the risk of earthquakes as huge hydraulic drills pour deep into the earth. A recent article in the L.A. Times went over the problems of earthquakes and showed pictures of the houses being wrecked. I appeal to you, please vote to place a moratorium on fracking until the problems associated with it are under control. Thank you.
Ms. Flickwell, followed by Andy Fujangfo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There is scientific evidence that hydraulic fracturing instigates earthquakes. Hydraulic fracturing pollutes well water and streams, hurting people and wildlife and pets. The toxic chemical-filled water dumped after pollutes the earth and air. See the documentary Gas Land. There is no safe fracking. Fracking must be banned. What took God millions of years to make can never be remade. Thank you.
Andy Fujangfo, followed by Don White.
I extend a sincere thank you to Mayor Andrew Weissman, Vice Mayor, and our Culver City council members to receive our feedback as citizens on this important topic of the hydraulic fracturing, fracking issue, and strive for a ban in our community. My name is Bambi Fujangfo. I'm an analytical chemist. I have had the opportunity to return to Harvard Extension School to study and focus on my first passion, which is our earth, its environments, and its sustainability. Urban or rural fracking is not supported in this passion of sustaining our community's health or environments. The chemicals listed in the Baldwin Hills CSD EIR itemized in the current oil field operations are proven to be hazardous to the health of animal and human and are dangerous to all residents and workers on short-term or chronic exposure levels. These drilling, fracturing practices, urban or statewide, should be banned completely in order to ensure our community's long-term health and well-being. I encourage our mayor and council members to vigorously move forward to revise ordinance on drilling, of which fracking is a species of said process, and ban this practice not only within our city limits, but encourage and support the ban statewide. Thank you.
Don White, followed by Stevensburg.
Have to raise this? Thank you, Mayor, council members. I promise I will not use my three minutes. My name is Don White. My family and I have lived in Culver City for over 20 years in the Sunkist Park neighborhood. Based on all that I've studied and learned about hydraulic fracturing, I'm convinced that it's an extremely hazardous and very harmful procedure and should not be used. So I urge the council members to both... The moratorium's a good first step, and I urge you to support the moratorium in the state of California. But in addition, I urge you to do all that you can to work to ban fracking in California, certainly in Culver City. It's especially dangerous, I think, in a highly populated area like we live in here. So I hope that you'll do that to protect the health of Culver City's residents, our air, our water, and our environment in general. Thank you very much.
There's been lack of transparency on their part. We need open dialogue. Two, in your resolution to the state, please include a critical paragraph that has three points. The paragraph that because of the density of the surrounding urban population and its proximity to an active 7.4 quake fault, that all these unconventional oil and gas extraction methods, commonly called fracking, are prohibited in the Baldwin Hills, Ewood oil field until the state one requires the PSP retrofit all 1,600 wells of whatever function or non-function, plus any new ones they plan to drill to withstand a macro-seismic 7.4 event that science now shows they cause micro-seismic events whenever they drill. And I will send you the link to the industry videotapes talking about these events and talking about how they can't predict where that horizontal drilling is going to go, and it does go into faults. Two, that PSP put up a surety bond adequate to cover costs of death and damages that can result from an error by them or their subcontractors to us, the citizens, landowners. Three, that the potentially affected public be duly informed and sign on to such an agreement before any such drilling would begin. And lastly, I ask that the city do likewise, as I'm recommending to the resolution to the state in our upcoming ordinance changes, and that you all provide educational workshops delineating... One last sentence. Delineating risks and benefits in the city regarding all options that the city can take with sufficient public notice, inviting discussions and comments as opposed to the three minutes that we have when we're in a gentle monologue with you on the dais. Thank you.
Oliver, followed by Gary Bless.
Good evening, Mayor Weissman, esteemed council city members. I'm here as a concerned citizen, Culver City resident, concerned parent, and a Los Angeles business owner. I'm here to deliver only part of the almost 20,000 signatures to a petition I started last week. There are 17,598 here on a disk. I didn't think I could print them all out in time. When I left my house, it had reached 18,000, and the goal was 20,000. And I'm not going to turn it off, so they will continue to mail it out, hopefully to you all and to Governor Jerry Brown. I ask, Mr. Mayor, that you please pass this on to Governor Jerry Brown. There is no way to regulate fracking. There is no guarantee by oil and gas to prevent leaks into groundwater or subsequent earthquakes. I'm not interested in polarizing against big gas and oil. There are solutions. We have the opportunity to follow France, Germany, Iceland, England. I'm working independently with a solar hydrogen scientist who believes there's a way to neutralize carbon emissions through hydrogen technology. We've had this technology for 30 years. We believe there's a way to use garbage refuse as a resource to convert into energy. This is one very creative way of thinking. We need subsidies for clean energy. We need your support. Culver City is all wetlands out to the ocean through the Bayona Wetlands. Please preserve our land, air, and water. Preserve us all. We are all almost 90% water, all humans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmen. My name's Gary Bless. I basically have to say ditto to all the former speakers here. One thing I did want to say is the industry, we can't really rely on them. Every time they've said one thing, we actually get another result. In the past, we can see the property damage and the health effects that's happening to all the community. And now they want to go ahead and millions of gallons of water and contaminate it while we're in always ration. As for the earthquakes, this is from the USGS. It says, "As for Loop Gate and Falls with some substance injecting high-pressure fluids deep into the ground is known to be able to trigger earthquakes, to occur sooner than they would have without." However, this would be a dangerous pursuit to do in any populated area as one might trigger a damaging... trigger a damaging earthquake." This is a USGS stating this. I don't know why we have to make any second thoughts about putting a ban on fracking. Thank you.
Karen Walther, followed by Michelle Weiner.
I sort of did a Evelyn Wood PowerPoint presentation because I thought I would only have 120 seconds to exercise my rights here to speak. So that's the second slide. Can you go back to the first one? Anyway, the first slide shows a cross-section. Oh, that's the third slide. Oh, I knew this technology wasn't going to work. But anyway, the first slide would have shown the cross-section of the complex heavily-faulted geology of the Inwood Oil Field. Through PXP's published papers, we know that they've been using fracturing on the different formation for 40 years now. You can't, because I made it 120 seconds, so. I own idea. Why don't I, well, no, I can't do that because I'll be, anyway. Could you just start it over? Sorry. I know. Okay. That's the geology of the Inwood Oil Field. Those are the different dates that PXP's been fracturing. That's a plan from 2005 and 2009 for Culver City. Here are some risks realized by oil operations. The Baldwin Hills dam collapse, and on Saturday afternoon, December 14th, I think this was going to happen. We had all this damage to the community. 277 homes were damaged, 12 million in property damage. This is what we see now in the Windsor Hills. Water main breaks. This is a graben that's been activated by oil field operations most probably. This is the kind of damage you see to residential homes in Windsor Hills. And again, another hazard realized by Los Angeles was the Fairfax District Ross Trescoles explosion. This was in 1985. 23 people were sent to the hospital. You can see the flames that came up along the curbs from the gas that had migrated up from an old well through a fault. This is what we have presently in Los Angeles. This is by tire plexes. This sewer system is supposed to be mitigated by a vent stack, which it's not working right now. That was methane, and VOCs coming up. Here you see hydrochlorothiol seeping up from the curb. It's very kind of hard to see, but if you look right at the area of the, and this would be the dog park leak, which Culver City has seen as a realized risk. And this is Playa Vista, where millions of cubic feet of methane are escaping every day. So I think the, let me get that last slide paper. "California and Culver City need to prohibit the well stimulation technique of hydraulic fracturing until all the independent peer-reviewed science is in on the potential for it to do damage to our environment and community health and safety." Thank you. Thank you.
Karen Walther, followed by Brenna Norton.
Hi. I'm Michelle Weiner, 26-year resident of Lindbergh Park, little honorable mayor and council members. Ditto to some of the very scary evidence that we've been hearing over several meetings. I won't go into that. I think we all feel this, and what I really wanted to do was kind of emphasize how we're all working together, and I want to celebrate what the city has done over a number of years to protect the environment, health, and welfare of our community. So back in 2008, our mayor participated in the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and there, the mayors made a commitment, an agreement, to reduce CO2 emissions by 7% below the 1990 levels by 2012. And here we are, and we've done a lot. We have this wonderful fleet of natural gas vehicles, and, you know, it's natural gas, so now we're in a bit of a bind, but, you know, it does reduce the emissions. We have all kinds of measures that you can find on our website. They're pretty impressive things that our city does. The transportation facility tests stormwater runoff monthly. We test our petroleum fuel sites, where our vehicles are fueled in the city monthly to make sure that we maintain clean air standards and to protect the groundwater quality. So many different, there's lists and lists of measures that this city does to protect our environment and to conserve resources. And so I feel like this is wonderful. This is something to be really, really proud of. And so I really want us to just take stock, be brave, as other folks have said, and move forward, because there's plenty of evidence before us that this is dangerous, and, you know, we could be facing disasters that are so overwhelming and so expensive that the taps that you all are contemplating and that we all want to support won't even come close to solving those kinds of problems. So let's celebrate, let's keep moving forward, and let's ban fracking.
Karen Walther, followed by Mark Schlossberg.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brenna Norton. I'm the local organizer here for Food and Water Watch. Food and Water Watch is a national public interest consumer organization that has banned fracking or passed moratoriums on fracking in a host of states and local communities across this country. I want to thank the council members for putting forward a resolution calling on the state to put a moratorium on fracking until proven safe, but I think it needs to be strengthened as others have spoke to for a full ban on fracking. However, the resolution is not enough to protect Culver City residents who live next to Ground Zero in the fracking crisis in our state. I am standing here on behalf of the growing number of Culver City residents who want to see a ban in their city. Residents surrounding the Inwood Oil Field, as has already been spoken to, are seeing their homes crack and their land sink since the increased drilling. Future fracking threatens increased economic and property damage for Culver City residents. Fracking throughout the country is linked to thousands of cases of water contamination, with some cases across the country requiring residents to open their doors and windows when showering or washing the dishes, so their homes will not explode. It's also caused serious local and regional air pollution across this country that is scientifically linked to greater chances of acute and chronic health conditions. Residents I have been working with alongside already have seen a rapid increase in unexplained cancers, rashes, and asthma. In addition to the public health and environmental issues, fracking is causing economic woes for communities across this country, leaving plummeting property values in its wake. A homeowner from Pennsylvania was recently denied a mortgage based on fracking underway on his neighbor's property, and Quicken Loans cited plummeting properties, I'm sorry, cited fracking happening nearby as the reason for denying the mortgage. Other community members tonight have spoken to the risks of earthquakes, and the poor track record the industry has of leaks, blowouts, and accidental releases, of which Culver City has unfortunately already been exposed to. A statewide ban is essential, and I hope you guys will strengthen the resolution tonight, and we wholeheartedly support you moving forward with this resolution. In addition, the bill sponsored by Assembly Member Butler and Assembly Member Holly Mitchell in the House California Legislature right now is not strong enough to protect Californians from fracking. In many of these states, that a moratorium would be in place until any regulation is put in place, and provides no minimum requirements about what that regulation would be. I hope Assembly Member Butler and Holly Mitchell will listen to her constituents and strengthen this bill. Today, the governor of North Carolina vetoed a bill that would allow fracking in North Carolina with regulations. California should strive to reach the same standards as North Carolina did today, so that no Californians will be exposed to what Culver City and Baldwin Hills are already experiencing. I'd like to say in closing that Food and Water Watch legal team is offering pro bono legal assistance to the city in researching the outstanding questions and crafting any ordinance. Thank you.
Schlossberg, followed by Karina Wilkinson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. My name is Mark Schlossberg. I'm National Organizing Director for Food and Water Watch. As Brenna just mentioned, Food and Water Watch is a national consumer organization. We've got offices in 15 states, and we were the first national organization to come out very strongly for a ban on fracking. We do not believe that fracking is a practice that can be done safely. It is inherently unsafe. The risk to our water, air, and communities, as we've seen across the country, is too great to risk with regulation. It needs to be banned. It needs to be stopped so our communities can be protected. One thing that I've learned, as I've gone throughout the country talking to people about this, is the great amount of passion, bravery, and dedication in the communities that are fighting against this very dangerous process. From New York, North Carolina, Ohio, Michigan, across the South into the Mountain West in Colorado, people are rising up and saying, "No to fracking. It should not be done. It's inherently unsafe, and it should be banned." You have before you a couple of resolutions, a couple of measures, and I would urge you to, in your voting, express the collective will of the people in this room today, who have overwhelmingly said that fracking is unsafe and should be banned. I would urge you to amend your resolution dealing with the state legislation, not calling for a moratorium, a temporary measure, but calling for a ban on fracking in the state of California. We need to speak up and stand for what is the right policy, not what may be politically palatable in Sacramento. We need to say that this is not a practice that should happen. Our communities need to be protected, and we need a ban on fracking. We also urge you to express the will of the residents here in Culver City in this room today and ban fracking in Culver City. My son Steven here would like to say a couple of words as well. He's a resident of the state of California.
Ban fracking.
Karina Wilkinson, followed by Chris Payne.
Hi, my name is Karina Wilkinson. I'm also with Food and Water Watch. I've been a Pennsylvania and New Jersey organizer for the last two years. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm here in support of both the statewide ban and the Culver City ban. My family is here in the South Bay, so that's what brings me here this week. In New Jersey, we passed a ban last year, a statewide ban, that the governor converted through a conditional veto to a moratorium, but we have legislators working again to pass a statewide ban in New Jersey. Just last week, we also passed a ban through our legislature on the disposal, treatment, and storage of fracking waste and wastewater. This is now on the governor's desk. We also had 6,000 New Jerseians sign petitions in support of the waste ban. The waste ban from states surrounding New Jersey is already coming in for treatment. So if you want an example of what allowing the industry to move forward without tough regulations can look like, just take a look at what's happening in Pennsylvania. So my colleague already mentioned, there's blowouts, spills, there's towns like Dimmock, Pennsylvania, where water's been contaminated after fracking began in the region three years ago. The EPA is only now coming in, testing household water. The wastewater treatment plants were supposedly treating the waste, which we know has carcinogens in it and toxins. Also, the Marcellus Shale under Pennsylvania and New York contains radioactive materials that come back up with the wastewater. So this was just being treated, quote-unquote, "treated" and released into rivers in the western part of the state. This is why you see towns like Pittsburgh banning the practice within their jurisdiction. We have pipeline leaks. We have compressor station explosions that have occurred in Pennsylvania. So it's really urgent that states and municipalities act. We have 23 towns in New Jersey that have passed, including our state capital Trenton, they have passed anti-fracking resolutions, and some have passed the waste and wastewater bans as well. So we need to really just move forward with clean, with green energy technologies and not go back to more of these polluting fossil fuel-based technologies. So on a personal note, I want to say I grew up next door in El Segundo, just right next to the refinery. I developed asthma. I grew up in the 70s, where you would go out day after day and just see that yellow air, and we've really, with the new technologies, done a lot to clean it up. So we need you to work with us to protect the environment, to protect the health of residents, and, you know, as they say in Pennsylvania, "Once you frac, you can't go back."
Chris Payne, followed by Rich Waters.
Hi, I'm Chris Payne. I'm a resident of Culver City for five years, and when I moved here, I decided to take my house on Baldwin Hills and turn it into a model of the 21st century. So we put solar panels on it, and we're making about 50% of our energy of the house to power both the house and our cars. And I like to think that this is the direction we can all head, especially in a city like Culver City where we have so many roofs, so much sun, indeed, these giant oil fields, which have been here for years, which should also be collecting sunlight instead of extracting oil from these resources. I wanted to say that I'm particularly proud of my city. It was the Santa Monica for years, and coming here and watching what happened at the educational thing with my elected leaders here, and now with this HU moratorium that you guys have proposed against already, I'm sure our tremendous industry pressure makes me very proud to be living here. We're up against a very well-financed industry, and really the source of a lot of the money that's coming to the United States right now, so this is going to be a tough battle. And I'm not naive. I know natural gas is an important part of what's going on for us. In fact, my first film, fully confessing here, was about natural gas in Wyoming. I made it in 1890, and it was about the industry ramping up on natural gas. Hydrofracking was not a part of the situation. And here we are in 2011. My most, film I'm best known for is Who Killed the Electric Car? In this film, we told the industry, we said, "Hey, industry, you're making a huge mistake." Well, the natural gas industry is making a huge mistake now, and the way to turn this back is by people standing up like we have tonight, organizations helping us from all parts of the country, and brave cities, even the smallest Culver City standing up and saying, "You know what? This is a mistake. This is how change happens." So I believe change can happen, and I can believe change starts to start right here, and I'm just pretty proud to be part of Culver City in the midst of big change. So thank you very much.
Rich Waters, followed by Sir Dennis Alval.
Yeah, present. Mayor and council, mayor and council members. All of the things that have been said before are really obvious. I think I'd like to put the underscore on one thing. If you take a look at the U.S. Geology Survey for all of California, you will see on it all of these faults that are all over California, but in particular, in Culver City, right underneath La Cienega Boulevard runs a fault. It is the terminus of the Inwood Newport Fault. The reason for the Baldwin Hills being lifted up is because of this fault. Now, how is it possible that anything that man can make, especially for the pipes and items that they showed us at the last meeting, can possibly withstand that kind of force to stop, to be able to stop any kind of pollution in the ground? So I just kind of leave you with that idea that the Baldwin Hills are raised by this fault. I don't think there's anything that the PXP can put in the ground that can anywhere come close to holding the pollutants that are there. Thank you.
Can you finally pronounce your last name for us, or I'll give it right?
No worries. You might not even get it right after 10, because it's a little tricky. It's Akbushul. So my name is Dennis Akbushul. I'm a concerned citizen. I'm also a participant in the Occupy Los Angeles movement. Last time I was here, actually, to special events, how many of the city council members were here for the meeting on the 18th of June?
Twelve.
Sorry, 12th of June. I imagine that. So perhaps you would remember that after hearing the testimony given by numerous tight- So perhaps you would remember that after hearing the testimony given by numerous types of people, whether professionals or community members, that Los Angeles passed a ban. Last time I was here, there were community members speaking of benzene poisoning that was acquired elsewhere, but natural gas does cause those sorts of substances to be released into the water supplies, and many of the same people that I heard at that time are the people that are here today. I heard city accountants speak of the potential cost of a fracking disaster. I heard doctors speak of patients and other fracked communities. I've heard of scientists speak of fracking well casings cracking. I heard activists speak to the general concerns of legitimacy on trying to regulate an earthquake and continuing to destroy the planet for a lack of foresight. People, we live in Southern California. You can't tell me that there's no way we can figure out how to put a solar panel on every building in here. You want to talk about payback? This isn't a gamble. Solar panels don't poison water supplies. Seriously, how do you regulate an earthquake? And let's speak about what the corporations said. They said that they will voluntarily report things. Well, guess what? This is not a movie where the worst consequence is a corrupted youth. It's a dead one. It's safe. We've been doing it for years. Yet they won't release the sites or the chemicals that they use. If terrorists were planning to poison your water supply, you would demand action. Say fracking is like clean coal. A fiction. I will not dishonor this council or anyone else here with more of their lies. Earlier tonight, during the invocation of this session, this council spoke of life, liberty, and happiness. Well, fracking will guarantee those for a few, and the opposite for quite many more. We spoke of government by consent. While I live in Westchester, it's not Culver City, but it's directly adjacent, and I do not consent to this fracking of my life or that of my community. I urge you to echo my sentiments. A ban is what is needed. Regulation is not.[1614.38][1614.38](applause).
For nine months, but I've been an environmentalist since the first Earth Day in 1970. I started college in 1975, and by my spring semester, we had the Love Canal disaster in New York. And I ended college in 1979 with a Three Mile Island nuclear near meltdown. Since then, I have witnessed numerous disasters caused by greedy corporations focused on cutting corners and the bottom line and not the health of communities, safety, or the Since then, we've had most... Well, I'm not going to enumerate them all, but the most recent ones were the Massey Coal Mine Explosion of a few years ago and the Deepwater Horizon spill. Despite landmark environmental regulations in the 1970s, we can no longer depend on the federal government to protect us. Now we have what is called regulatory capture of the agencies, otherwise known as the fox guarding the hen house. Things have only gotten worse since Citizens United, with billionaires and corporations literally buying elections, and corporate-funded groups like Alec actually writing state and federal legislation. With the crippling budget cuts in this state, we are dependent on these very same corporations to fund the very agencies that regulate them, such as the agency we've been talking about tonight, Dogger. And even when this agency does try to do its job by regulating the drilling, what happens? Our governor, who I actually proudly worked for in 1992, when he was a real progressive and an environmentalist, our governor fires the two heads of that agency because they weren't approving enough drilling permits. So it has really come down to officials like yourselves, local officials, who are closest to your constituents, who may see these very same constituents every day in the Trader Joe's or at the local restaurants that we so love to come to here in Culver City. So basically, I'm just here not to talk about the dangers of fracking. Everybody has already adequately covered them, but to beg you to please be the ones, the last remaining ones, to represent the 99%. Please ban fracking in and under Culver City.[1788.63][1788.63](applause).